Hello, everyone. It's two oh three. I believe, yes, Fiore is joining in now. I'm looking at, I have myself, Fiore, I need Tim Allen, I need one more, I believe. To stop, I don't have Quorum yet, so I'm gonna beg everybody's patience. Tim is on.
Hey, guys.
Fiore is on. We have Quorum, and I believe Lindsay is not going to be able to hold on a second.
Melvin, while you're waiting, did we, I mean, did an email go out yesterday or this morning or something?
Yes, actually. Apparently, Fiore has not been getting the emails, documents, and things related to the committee. I'll talk to somebody else about that at some point. But if there's no objections, I'd like to start, get started for everybody's sake of everybody's time. My name is Melvin Edwards. I'm chairman of the Responsible Employer Ordinance Committee. We are joined by Chase Wan from Procurement Hope, Button also from Procurement, Attorney Theolies is the attorney for Procurement. I see we have Pat Burns, who, I don't remember what your title is, Pat, but no offense.
It's okay, comptroller.
Comptroller, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
Fiore Grissette represents, is a member of the committee, and I believe he's a part of the president of one of the local unions. My colleague, Tim Allen, City Councilor, Paul Tuttle, from one of the media outlets, my apologies as well, and Charlie Carpenter, from Charlie Payne from the Carpenter's Union. We may have some other people, Weston Mass, yeah, it was. And of course, we always want to thank Focus Springfield, to our guest, Mr. Bernard Thomas, and to our guests, also Ms. Jennifer Little Greer. I want to thank all of you for your time and for, I'd like to get it started. I believe, I'm gonna, the agenda, I don't have it right in front of me, but please, I beg your patience with that as well. But I'm gonna get started, there's no objections, by Mrs. Greer, as, if you could get started by introducing yourself and your organization, who you're representing. You, we were fortunate enough to have a PowerPoint recently, I believe Che, Hope, and Theolies were in on it, and Fiore wasn't, Tim was. But if you could get us started, and for the sake of time, and we really appreciate your being here.
Okay, thank you so much for having us. My name is Jennifer Little Greer. I'm the Executive Director for the Minority Construction Council. Today, I have Bernard Thomas, my board chair, joining me for the meeting. Counselor Melvin, would you like me to do a quick overview of the presentation? Would you like this to be a talking discussion? Please let me know. I can condense it so that, for those of you who've already seen it, I can shorten that.
Well, actually, why don't you do the shortened version? I think that would get people pretty much up to date. I've had some conversations. I can follow up with a couple of people as well.
Okay, awesome. Okay, let me get that going. Just checking to see, can everyone see our presentation? Is it showing right now?
It popped up.
We had it up for a quick second and it went back down.
Okay, let me see. Do I have authority to share?
Yes, you do.
Okay, can you see it now?
No.
I think you may be sharing the wrong screen. I'm going to end your screen sharing. I don't know if you could just restart it. A year later, you would have thought they would figure out a better way to do this, right?
What about now? Can you see?
That looks wonderful.
We're in.
Okay, um. A little bit about the Minority Construction Council. I just want to make sure you are seeing the right thing right now, it says about us.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Okay, um. The organization represents minority contractors across the state of Connecticut. We've been in existence since 2002. We've been incorporated since 2005. Our Board of Directors are made up of contractors across the state of Connecticut. Our mission is to advocate, support, create development opportunities and connections between the minority contractors, along with our corporate members, entities, agencies, municipalities, and state agencies as the contracting opportunities come up. Making sure that there's minority participation on those projects. Also, we focus on making sure that the contractors have all of the development opportunities that are available, so that they're best in standard and they're aware of what's going on. Our goal is to create and increase minority participation, as well as making sure that those contractors are certified. They have everything that they need to be, so that they can be visible as project owners and municipalities are looking for those businesses, meaning making sure that they're certified. This is a little bit of information about myself. I've been with the organization since 2016. I was recruited by the minority contractors. My previous role, I worked with the Greater New England Minority Supplier Development Council, where I certified minority contractors from Maine down to Connecticut. Making sure that they are true minority businesses, maintaining at least 51% minority ownership control and auditing that information as well. Here's some information on different organizations that I sit on and represent. In regards to the city of Hartford, because we're looking at the city of Hartford program that we currently offer. We currently provide a small contractors and minority business/women business support arm to the city of Hartford. We provide technical assistance, capacity building programs. We make sure that the contractors are bonded, have liability. We provide those development workshops on behalf of the city, as well as provide contracting opportunities and connections with those contractors. We also have something that's very unique to the city of Hartford. We have a program that's called the Small Contract to Fund Assistance Program, where in the city of Hartford, if a developer comes in, they have to maintain a certain percentage of minority contractor participation, as well as Hartford residents. And from that program, we were able to fund a small fund where we're able to assist the minority contractors. They can borrow from that fund to help do payrolls and things like that. They pay it back within a month. And that's a program that's unique to Hartford that we have established together, so we jointly work on that together. In addition to that service, we also assist Hartford residents. So those Hartford residents and second chance citizens, we make sure that we have all the training classes for them. And we provide technical assistance, not just to the small businesses, making sure that they have the designations, but also to the local residents that are needed to work on the local projects. Listed on the screen, I have a host of other things that we do in regards to what organization, aside from assisting with the city of Hartford, MBE certification program, we provide technical assistance on the state program, Connecticut Department of Administrative Pre-qualification Program. We are a technical assistance arm for the Connecticut Department of Transportation, as well as with the SBA assisting with the eight-day certification program, Hubzone. We assist the contractors with becoming certified or registered in the SAM system of awards management system, assisting with their Dun &amp; Bradstreet bid preparations, COVID-19 PPP, as well as EIDL assistance. And I'm talking very fast, so I'm gonna take a breath. Okay, in regards to capacity building, what we provide, pre-COVID, we were able to host a number of different in-house trainings. We provide them for Hartford, but we also provide it in New Haven, as well as in Bridgeport. But in regards to the Hartford program, for last year, we did not hold our capacity building trainings in-house, because right when it was time to kick off, COVID started, but come the beginning of next month, we go back to hosting that for a small subset of contractors. We do 10 contractors at a time, where we give them a capacity building of 10 hours of extensive handholding with our partners. We perform these services with our partners to make sure they have everything that they need. So for the 2019, 89 contractors went through that program. For our 2020 services in regards to the city of Hartford, for, we are funded from the city of Hartford under that program through community block grant dollars. For the offering, we were able to provide, and this is from our final reporting, 59 city of Hartford-based contractors were serviced through that grant. Seven of those firms received bonding and insurance training. 150 of the contractors went through all of the trainings throughout the year, even if they were at the beginning of the year in person, and then trickling through the middle of the year online and other vehicles. 16 development trainings were offered last year of the city of Hartford, 100, excuse me, 300 MBE contractors participated. We held eight safety training classes, which consisted of the OSHA forklift boom, anything that the contractors would need to make them to increase their capacity, as well as their staff. What we also have is we offer a weekly newsletter. On Monday, we send out a weekly newsletter that goes out to over 2,000 readers. Once a month, we hold a membership meeting. Today's the day that, tonight, we hold our membership meeting. It's been held virtually. So it's a great thing with the being held virtually, because contractors can be all across the state and be able to clue in. First, we have a membership portion, then from 5:30 until 6:15, because we're mindful of the contractors' times. We allow project owners or construction managers or general contractors to come on and talk about those opportunities, so that we're able to make the minority contractors aware of those opportunities, so that they can see, okay, is this a project that I want to bid on? So that they're able to see what's going on and making them aware of what's going on. Tonight, what we have is we have three presenters for tonight. The presenters for tonight are going to talk about those projects, but also we have the state coming on. And the state is going to be focusing on pre-qualification. So what is the pre-qualification entails? So this will allow our contractors who are not pre-qualified to do work on, for instance, a school project, or the state-funded project. What are the requirements that they need so that they can ramp up to a higher level to those projects out of 500,000 and more? For our 2020 statistical data, we put out over 1,093 bid opportunities via our newsletter. Forty contracting opportunity events were held in conjunction with our organization. For our in-person and virtual events, 852 participants participated. In regards to our minority contractors, 42 business referral contracts and contracts were awarded that totaled $6,769,000. For Springfield-based partners that we have established thus far, we are definitely working with home city development, and that's originally how we became connected with you. But our resource partners are the Association of Black Business and Professionals, Mass Hiring Springfield, People Ready of Springfield, Urban League of Springfield, Massachusetts, Small Business Development Center, the Mass Connect Procurement and Technical Center, Federal OSHA. We are a resource partner for them. The publications that we are currently utilizing to make sure that we're connecting and connecting with the minority contractors in the Springfield region are the African American Point of View, La Vos Huespiana, Inquiring News, The Metro Record Newspaper. Some of the other trainings that we have, I'm not gonna read them down for you, but here's a list of the trainings that we do offer. AIA training workshops for those projects that are public, making sure that the contractors are aware on how to do that, their back office are aware of them. Sexual harassment preventative training. Aerial boom scissor lift. We also partner with Turner School of Construction Management. I'm proud to say we've had great success with that. We had over 42 contractors that did participate in that program, and a host of the other ones that we do offer. Some of our Connecticut partners that we have on the municipal level, state and federal level, we have listed city of Hartford, Bridgeport, the town of Bloomfield, Connecticut Department of Transportation, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, CHRO, Connecticut Small Business Development Center, Connecticut PTAC, the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, Department of Labor, Connecticut Small Business Administration, federal and Connecticut OSHA, HEPCO, CCIA of Connecticut, AGC of Connecticut. Matter of fact, I just jumped off of their annual award to come here, because they're having that go on right now. They just elected a new president and officers, and the Associated Builders and Contractors of Connecticut. Signature events that we have for our contractors is annually, we host a partnership award dinner. Last year, what we did was, we did that dinner virtually. We were the first one in the industry to do, to go virtually with that, and we successfully offered that. At that time, we provide awards to our minority contractors and our corporate partners for working together and creating opportunities. Annually, we hold a construction expo. We found that it was important to hold that this year, so what we did was, we held that outside. And it was very successful and well-attended, and we were able to maintain social distances as, with, along with masks and temperature checking and all that good stuff. Just last month, we held our legislative initiative event. We also provide advocacy for our contractors, making sure that we're focusing on what are the needs of the minority contractors. We're also proud, we're also proud that we also offer scholarship awards to to students who are going into the construction industry. What you see here is, this is our outside, this one, these are pictures of our outside expo this year, and our, some of our MBEs showcasing at the expo. The mass pictures are the ones that you see at the expo. This was the previous, this was dinner, that did not require the mask. Here's a list of our corporate partners. We also provide a transportation matchmaker for the transportation industries across the straight, across the state. And Pioneer Valley is normally one of the ones that normally do participate in that. And that gives them an opportunity to also connect with disadvantaged businesses who are in the construction industry. What we're looking to do is to create this program. This program has been very successful, and I know the city of Hartford is very proud of this program, because we've been able to increase the number of minority contractors that are certified with the city of Hartford, as well as bring, increase their capacity, increase their capacity, making sure that their back offices are sound, making sure that their staff are trained in performing safe services, as well as providing them the resources and technical assistance that they need. What would make this program work well with the city of Springfield is, we would like to be one of your partners, to mirror this program for your city. And I am done.
Jennifer, thank you very much. Great presentation, really appreciate it. Very informative, and I hope that those who hadn't heard it before are as impressed as I am, and I, thank you. As now, we were supposed to hear from Dave Maynard. Unfortunately, he's under the weather, so he will not be attending. But I believe there may be another gentleman that represents the Association of Black Business Professionals. Is that correct with us today?
I was hoping that Mr. Griffith would be on, but I don't see him on the line.
Focus Springfield, can we get back to, can I get back to this? Let's see if I get back to the screens. Yeah, okay, there we go. We also are now joined by Counselor Jesse Letterman as well, and so, gentlemen, ladies, anybody have any comments or questions for Jennifer? Kind of trying to be a little informal here. Just take yourself off the mute, Jim.
Thanks. Yeah, I was there last week. Thanks, Melvin. I was there last week and here again today. What would you see, I mean, I want to ask the Springfield people who are closer to this, you know, Theo and Che and Hope, you know, their perspective on it, but if you were, if we were gonna go forward with you, Jennifer, in some fashion, what would you suggest that your strength is, or a good place to start from your side?
Well, we definitely need funding for it, because we have to put put a game plan together. Originally, when we started this program, now I'm going into five years with the organization. When we started the program, we started by first just getting the word out and start development, finding out who was there, creating development, and then from the development, doing the one-on-ones. Because from looking through, identifying currently who's in Springfield, I believe that when I looked at the construction, I originally saw maybe 18 businesses that were certified with the state who were Springfield-based. But since I've done the advertisement, I would say at least another six have come out and reached out and contacted me. So the first thing I would focus on is getting them identified and certified. And typically, what that means is assisting them to make sure that they're visible. That's the first thing. Make them visible, and then we can assess the needs from that, from there.
Can I interject a little bit too?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's important to not only have individuals not only certified, find out the individuals that aren't certified, try to get them certified, because one thing that was big before Jennifer came in Hartford, we had a lot of contractors that they weren't on the DAS, they weren't on the city procurement and stuff like that. And then what that, what that gave was a false sense of GCs there, of what was available, what was the availability for minority contractors. And it's also to begin to bridge a relationship between GCs and also minority contractors, because, as you know, in the construction field, there is a lack of, there's a lack of skillset labors out there, which people are calling for all around the nation. And also, it's that relationship that, that needs to be helped, that, that needs to be built. And Jennifer does a great piece with that to help build that relationship, because there's a huge, there's a huge trust across the board for both the minority contractors and also the GCs, and we have to bridge that together, where we can all work together. I think that, that, that's one of the biggest pieces, and then you'll find out there's more individuals that really want to come on board.
Can I jump in there again? So I mentioned that we have a monthly membership meeting. So what the general contractors, as well as the municipalities do, is they look for that opportunity, so that they can make that connection. So that is huge for, if you have a project out there, you're just fishing, hoping that someone touches on. But once that relationship starts, you could say, okay, I remember that person, that this is the business that they do, that they do. So you start creating that synergy. So now it's not, okay, I don't know anyone, because normally people do business with who they know. But now those relationships are starting, so they're feeling more comfortable, and they're opening up to partner or contract more with minority contractors.
Okay, Theo, Hope, Che, I guess this is pretty much for you guys. I understand there's rules and like regulations about how we do our procurement. One of the questions and comments that's always come up is that the pool of minority contractors has been limited. Do you see a value where this would be a, eliminate some of the excuses of the GCs that they don't have access? And does this violate or anything legally in terms of the procurement, the federal laws or state laws around procurement? So I guess pretty much what I'm saying is, would you guys see this as a benefit or a hindrance? And I appreciate your honesty and your opinion on this. Hope, Theo, Che?
Well, I don't, I don't see this as a hindrance. But, you know, there is somewhat of a fine line in the procurement, and Theo can probably speak to this in more depth than, than I. I mean, we do, I mean, as far as training programs to bring more minorities, women, you know, the other categories that the REO covers into the trades, there's certainly a benefit to that. As far as minority and women-owned businesses, I mean, Massachusetts has a, has a registration as well and a certification program. Certainly, the, the GCs and the bidders have availability for that registration to see who in the area, whatever trades or businesses would fall under that category. I don't know if it's a situation where minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses aren't aware of the bids as they become available. I think, I think Springfield does some pretty extensive, as required by law, advertising of these projects, so I don't have magical answers. Theo, do you have any thoughts?
So this is probably the third or fourth time I've sat through the presentation. It is very impressive. It looks like there's some good things being done in Hartford. I don't think I'm illuminating anyone when I say that a more sophisticated bidder base would be good for business, both for the REO objectives and just, you know, having a bigger, stronger, more diverse, more educated, more sophisticated bidder pool for any project, you know, REO or not. But it sounds like Jen's program is really kind of taking it through those steps that Hope just identified. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jen.
What I'm finding is you have them there, but they're not credentialed, so you can't see them. And in just one week, I was able to come across six new ones that were of good size that could be added to your base that are right in Springfield.
Though, I don't know what you mean by base, because as Hope said, everything Though I don't know what you mean by base, because as Hope said, everything is really kind of open to the public. I, I don't have the ability to steer anything.
No, I understand.
Okay.
What I mean is, I, what I mean is when I refer to certification, because Springfield doesn't have its own mall contractor MWBE certification program. So you go to the state's program. So when you look at the state's program and if you were to search the state's program and say, okay, I want to hone in as to, because these are Springfield dollars, who are our Springfield contractors? There are Springfield contractors that are not there because they do not have that state certification. And one of the things a program would do is help those contractors become visible. Help them submit that paperwork so that you can now track them and say, okay, Springfield, we don't have 18. We have 40 contractors that are in our market that we can track. And the state program is good, but it's going outside of your territory to pull those because the ones in your market need assistance with getting through that process.
Would I be out of touch if I thought or offered to suggest that, or at least my interpretation, that this is something that not, that would benefit the REO in terms of its availability, but doesn't have to necessarily be steered by the REO? The work that we've already established and are doing in oversight of municipal construction would continue. And if the administration and my colleagues were to agree that this was a good thing and wanted to fund it, it would just create a larger pool that would benefit the works being done. I just wanted to make sure that as I advocate for what the association and Miss Greer is talking about, that it doesn't hamper the work of the REO. And, and I think from what I'm hearing, Hope, DL, and Shay hasn't said anything, but I think I, I'm assuming that that is the case. That the, the creation of this program would benefit the community because of the access minority contractors that probably are not at this time available. And that work would be going on in parallel to what the REO does. But it wouldn't be where we're like, we're not overstepping any legal bounds and we're not doing anything that would disrupt free trade. We're just trying to encourage people to, who are local, who would be able to bid. And that would benefit taxpayers across the board, at least that's my hope. I think I had mentioned, somebody had mentioned something about because of the pandemic, there's been a slight uptick of contractors bidding. But the more people bidding, the more competitive it is. I think that benefits taxpayers. And then it's just a question of what I'm hopeful Jennifer will be able to do is increase the pool of qualified bidders.
Right.
And as they continue to, and as the more they do work, the more the other larger contractors that are predominantly white will have more confidence working with them.
Right.
And that would benefit the community of circulation of dollars. That's my thought, but I'd be eager to hear. Pat Burns, comptroller, would you like to jump in here and share some thoughts if you're, if you're comfortable doing so?
Just, this is my first time seeing the presentation. It was quite impressive. From my end, it would just be a matter of identifying the funds and getting them into the budget. Or if, if they're going to be paid from grant funds to making sure they're eligible.
Okay, so that's the, to that point, this presentation was made in, in the general government committee about a week ago. After that meeting, I did reach out to the chief of staff of the mayor's office and had a nice conversation. He said that he would reach out and have a conversation with the president of the city council, Marcus Williams. And that at some time in the near future, we would all get together, myself, the president and some members of the, from, I believe Mr. Sheehan, DL, you're probably going to be invited to be in and on that meeting as well. But I believe that's in the works by the administration. And that's where we would, and of course, Pat Burns, I'm assuming we're going to have to have TJ in there as well. But that's ongoing. So what I really wanted to do was is that I thought the work of the association and what Mrs. Greer is doing in Hartford would be beneficial to the members of the committee to know about. I think we've, and I'm hopeful that everybody kind of agrees with that. And so if I, Charlie, did you have something you wanted to throw in there before I move on to?
I definitely would. I think that actually reaching out to the associated general contractors in Massachusetts and having them help mentor smaller businesses.
That would be awesome.
Get them through the D-CAM certification process, which, which can be difficult to navigate for anybody. Second thing is get right on central register. And all, all procurement bids usually get advertised on central register for contractors. I think it costs about a hundred dollars a year or a hundred and fifty dollars to.
Hundred bucks.
How much?
Hundred.
Hundred bucks and, and you'll get lists of contractors, decertified contractors, advertised bids, bids awarded. And, and really the first step is to track your progress. And to get certified for the file subbid category, I believe it's $50,000 now the threshold.
Correct.
A, a general contractor can hire any, in the file subcategory, any contractor they want, as long as the contract is under 50,000. But to get certified, they have to have a track record and prove that. And this work that the REO does by getting people on board with responsible contracting, if we, if we follow through with some of the requests for certified payroll, that will teach contractors how to do those paperwork, that paperwork, and they'll be prepared for, to be certified by the state.
So Charlie, I'm so glad you said that. That's a part of the technical assistance that we provide. So certified payroll, learning how to fill out the AI billing application as well as a certified payroll. We're in there training their back office staff so that they know how to do that. We do also partner with our union trades as well. So when that time comes, we're right there working together to make sure that that happens. And when we're doing our OSHA's and other things of that nature, they do come in and partner with us. We do utilize all of our partners to make sure that's a part. In regards to the AGC, we do have bi-monthly meetings with the AGC where we come together with our representations of our board in the AGC. And we strategize on how we're going to combat, where we know that the labor is short, how we're going to combat that. But we also focus on our legislative initiatives that affect both sides.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments? I see Jesse, Council Letterman, would you like to make a comment or question?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment. I appreciated the invitation to the committee. I was sorry I wasn't able to make the presentation in the general government committee last week, but I was glad I could get here. Jennifer, since your initial presentation, I've been hearing from many colleagues about how impressed they are with the program and how it might benefit the city of Springfield. So certainly appreciate the chairman's initiative, your initiative, ABBP. And all the effort to the REO committee always. I think that the council in, in recent years with the leadership, Councillor Edwards and Councillor Allen and Rep. Williams before them, you know, has been, you know, showing a real commitment to moving this type of work forward. So to the degree that I can be supportive, I'm certainly here. And again, Councillor Edwards, appreciate the initiative.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything before we move to the next agenda item? If you can just forward the PowerPoint to the email thread. Jennifer, is that a good chance?
Excuse me?
If you could forward the PowerPoint whenever you get a chance.
Okay. Typically, I don't share my stuff because people try to reduplicate, but I can most definitely do that.
Oh, either or, totally completely.
I could do that.
Okay, Jennifer, we're going to move on to the next item and Bernard Thomas as well. You're both welcome to, to continue to attend. I haven't heard anything from Fiore. I see he's still here. I assume he's listening. But if you would like to continue and listen in on what we're going to do next, you're welcome to do so. But if there are no objections, I believe Hope sent out a list of the latest, one of the latest projects and for, which is the Brightwood School. You should have that as a document, I believe, all the members of the committee and attendants should have that. That has a hundred numbers, minorities, women, residents and veterans hired onsite by particular trade. Anybody have any, would like to comment on that, either Hope, Shay or any of the committee members?
I'll just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right.
Well, I was just going to say that we only met about three weeks ago, so there aren't any huge changes on this. These numbers are pretty consistent with what, what this project has been doing over the course. As you can see, there were, that project is exceeding all categories with the exception of residents. And they're at 29.71% versus 35%. So I, I think overall, this, this to date has been a very successful project.
And just to piggyback on what Hope just said, not only are the numbers being met well, but we've also been through with COVID, with workers not coming back because of the added benefits because of COVID. So the numbers, as successful as they are, could actually even be better considering that the time that we're in right now. Thank you, Hope. Thank you, Shay. Fiore, did you want to jump in then? I know you were going to speak a minute ago.
Yeah, that's fine. So I'm going off the three weeks ago sheet. I didn't get any notifications or any, any documents for what you sent me, Melvin. So I think we really, you know, being new, the veteran portion of this, seven contractors supplied great numbers and veterans made up for the 14, thereabouts, that actually had all zeros. So I think that's an education piece, educating people or actually getting their members or workers to, to state that whether they're veterans or not. So I think that's definitely an education piece as we go forward. Doing great on all the numbers. Am I correct, Hope, that you just said 27% and change versus the 30%? We were almost 30% were asked, so there is a slight downcrease.
No, 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 Fiore, it's 29.71%, so just a hair under 30%.
So we're still pretty close to what we were. Okay, I just heard the 27. So the overall, the, the numbers of residents, you've only got, you know, you've got a couple contractors. Again, I do the circles where I really try to look at the contractors. Really not a lot of zeros on here, which is great. A lot of them are close, so it's great to see these residents go up. The minorities, we're doing fantastic on the numbers. Females, of course, always needs work. I think over two thirds of them, even though we're meeting the number, we are over two thirds of the contractors that are light or zeros. So again, I think it's going to be, as we move forward, we should be able to see these numbers increase. But more so, I just want to point out that I think at some point, you know, we, we want to start clocking who continues to show zeros. And then eventually this discussion would change to what do you do about it? So again, these numbers are great. Want to thank everybody for getting out there and educating the contractors that are on in this project. Thanks.
Just to speak to that about clocking the subcontractors, we keep all their numbers and they're sent out corrective action emails every month, even when they're not meeting their numbers in certain, certain categories. They still are not only encouraged to meet their numbers. We follow up not only with letters, but with phone calls or meetings with the subcontractor if this continues forward without any type of effort to bring up those numbers. So not only are they being tracked, they're being monitored and they know that as well. Okay, any other questions or comments? Nothing being said. Does, on the agenda, I had listed a past business. So is there any past business that needs to be discussed? And if I'm not hearing any public comment in this career, if you'd like to, this would be a moment, if you'd like to just offer a comment or observation. Hold on a second. Let me, let me get Tim Allen in here, my colleague. Council Allen?
Yeah, I just think, thanks, Councillor Edwards. Are we going to have a clear next step when we leave on here? Is the next step that meeting with the administration or what do you think? On the presentation?
On the presentation, Council Williams is, is organizing or scheduling a meeting between him and with the administration about the, the purpose and goal of the, of the association and what Miss Greer is asking is for an application for CDBG funding to be made for the establishment of this group here in Springfield. So I think that that will happen or I'm not, that that meeting will occur. It's the, the, her presentation to the REO is primarily so that the members of the committee who were not at the general government presentation would be, know what's going on in parallel. We think that these, the REO, the role of the REO as far as oversight is concerned, hasn't been established yet. But the thing is, we're all kind of rowing in the same direction. So that was really the purpose of having this career on to speak and make sure everybody was informed of what was going on. As far as the meeting with the mayor, I've, I've kind of left that to, or Tom asked and for Marcus, I'd make sure that Marcus, who was in attendance at the general government committee, trying to respect that chain of command and let them do that. And.
All right, great. That's fine. Thank, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thanks.
Now, as far as the REO is concerned, we established at the last meeting, we will meet every third Tuesday, 2 o'clock. I believe that is established now and accepted. And Miss Greer, you heard, you just very briefly heard what one of our reports looks like on a project, which is one of the school, local schools that's being constructed. Did you want to ask any question or offer a comment before we kind of get close to winding things up?
No, I just wanted to hear how, no, not yet. I don't have any comment.
At, at your convenience, on, 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 Miss Greer, would you, I believe you have my cell number at 413-348?
Just one moment, 413-31.
348.
348, okay.
8036.
Okay.
Could you, at your, at your convenience, give me a call?
Most definitely.
We, we can talk. And to the, is there, Charlie, did you have a public comment at this time before we wrap up? And if not, I'll certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have no comment to add at this time.
Well, everybody, Pat, we don't usually see you here, so we really appreciate having you here. To Paul, sorry for messing up your title, but we appreciate you as well. And to all the committee members, thank you very much, your time. And to our friends at Focus Springfield, whose plate is always full, trying to satisfy all these meetings, we say a hearty thank you and sincere appreciation for what they do. Motion to adjourn?
Sounds good. So moved.
And seconded by myself and, because we, well, Fury's there as well. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Have a wonderful day.
Okay, everybody. Thank you so much.